August eighth, twenty twenty-two, Mayor of the Wausilla City Council Meeting is called at six P M. Begin, council, please put away cell phone. You participating telephonically, meeting speaker, Congresswoman speaking. Someone speaking, please state your name for this committee. As a reminder to all the attorneys, the meeting is being held on. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sullivan Leonard? Here. Councilmember Graham? Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vlock?
Here.
Councilmember Rubio?
Here.
You do have a call, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Vlock is participating with us telephonically. Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, and Rubio are with us in person.
Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Graham would.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item of business is approved on the agenda, if you take this.
Graham? I do have a question, I will obviously answer. Seven point two, or we want to actually. Just inside. We're coming into the discussion. Possibility, Madam Clark?
Yes.
To the attorneys, will you weigh in?
I think it's a point of order for the clerk.
You threw the chair to the council. Um, I, Councilmember Graham, and it really, at the end of the day, is, is, uh, is within the councils around to change it. There is likely other people here because that's, we're not. Persons to be heard isn't particular to a topic. So perhaps the other people that want to testify are here and have things to do later in the evening, so. I'll leave it at that, I mean, it really is up to the body. That's just something to think about as you weigh in. You can certainly, it's well within to move agenda items.
I certainly think to be heard should be left to the.
All right, uh, are there any other changes to the agenda? None, the agenda will stand as presented. No special orders of the day, so we'll move to commission and agencies report to Deputy Administrator. Sawland Scapes Standard Review Committee.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, they are meeting upstairs, so if you want to talk landscape. Your meeting right now, uh, they meet the first Monday of each month. And, uh, their last meeting, they just discussed bond requirements, some difficulties in purchasing some plants here in Alaska, and ways to encourage additions and upgrades to properties. Uh, they had a couple more people attend tonight, so it's very well attended, so thank all of you for encouraging people to be in the conversation.
Any questions from council? None? We are at public participation, there's an ordinance scheduled for public hearing this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's ordinance serial number twenty-two twenty-six, amended by municipal code five twenty-four oh one oh grant conditions, adopting subset of seats, authorizing the city council to adopt non-reoccurring grant programs by ordinance. In W M C five twenty-four oh one oh A.
Public hearing on ordinance serial number twenty-two dash twenty-six is open, anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin with saying your first and last name, comments, and three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Eileen Falkenstein, and I represent Wausilla Area Seniors. First off, I would like to thank the city council for listening to members of this community. The proposed ordinance twenty-two twenty-six establishes a procedure for organizations to apply to the city for amenable funds on a non-reoccurring basis. I support ordinance twenty-two twenty-six and encourage the city council members to do so as well. This will greatly assist organizations to continue to, to provide services to the members of this community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify?
Good evening, Mayor Ledford, council members, my name is Mary Kay Reagan, city councilwoman, city resident, Wausilla resident, Wausilla County resident.
Anyone else?
My name is Tom Sterns, I'm the, uh, I'm with Wasi too. As I've watched this process go through many years, the, the, it's been about trusting, watch how you function, tell you. Because if your way there has been a telling, you're just, you're trying to give the, the, the profits us. It's one of those, and yet, you had to look and you had to see, is that the right thing to do? How to do it correctly? And then, you step back, you use the wisdom that you've been given, and you say, this doesn't look right, this doesn't look like what you're supposed to do. The city was, and so, you had the integrity to step back and say, we need to take your advice, so, I went back, and you look at it, and you look at the ordinance, the original ordinance, and the most important ones that we need to investigate. The good ordinance, it will be helpful to the nonprofits in this city. It will help, right on my eyes, others, not down the road, it will be long term, and it will help at this city to, to take, and to, 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 to.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Then none, public hearing is closed, is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-two dash twenty-six? Madam Mayor? Eileen?
I move ordinance serial number twenty-two dash twenty-six.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Sullivan Leonard and seconded by Councilmember. Ordinance serial number twenty-two dash twenty-six, is there discussion? Johnson?
I've thought about this long and hard. Um, I, I guess, I, I nod infirmly with this ordinance for two major reasons. First, it was written, grant really does not mention anything about the grant to us. At this particular point, we're committing city motive to organizations which may have a very fine and narrow until within the city of Wausau. I have a hard time with that. We have lots of needs in our city which are unmet at the current time. We have roads that are not paved, we have streets without streetlights, we have sewers that are overrunning, storm sewers that are overrunning. We have fences that are not down that haven't been repaired since the windstorm. We have financial need in our cities, as it is. Now, we're bringing forth a program to spend citizens' money for nonprofits, okay? Maybe we can refine this particular ordinance by actually writing into the ordinance, for these involve the greater benefit of citizens of Wausau that would need to be met by this specific ordinance. Let me give you an example. If an organization were to come to us and say, we would like to perform therapeutic. For the citizens of Wausau, and it would be a real problem, you could stand and say, well, let us decree. The citizens of Wausau. But on the other hand, if the same organization was to come to us and say, well, let us promote which is, you know, the people of Wausau. It was not a great gain to the citizens of Wausau. So what then defines where you're good, the ordinance doesn't really address that. Secondly, and probably the biggest objection that I'm of is ideology. The organizations that have spoken in favor of this ordinance, I wholly support. And yet, I think if everybody here on the city, on the city council thinks in order to. With a significant list, all of our lists may be different, but once we open this up to having nonprofits coming in and asking for city money, and spent for their particular benefit. Ideology, I wouldn't support. I'm sorry, we've, we've opened a Pandora's box in terms of allowing citizens' money to be spent in such a way. Now, it is interesting to note that my employer, they come out and they say, do you wish to give money to to these particular lists of charity, and you can select out various charities that do not fit your particular ideological path? This ordinance has no such thing and no provision therefore to, to select out organizations which any one of us may or may not have an ideological bias against. This particular point, I'm unable to support this ordinance, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Further discussion? Fine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the comments from the previous council members. Just ready to give comments to the, the, which are ordinance for granters personally.
I also said that we would be pleased with the way that we would like to show you. Thank you very much that. I'm not sure if we're in a position for this.
Mayor, may I respond to this? Thank you. I just want to remind council that in previous meetings, Deputy Mayor V. L. K. Lee has been introducing for council. They're in clear understanding that we would bring back people as they choose council and the city. Secondly, if those passes, they are appropriate, we would give them as next. We have no objection at the previous meeting, and that's kind of major whether there's objection. How much money we would look at, what the formula would look at. And that was to come back to council, so we get a whole objective there. So yes, on council, we actually have a function at this point because our committee does it exactly what council has to do. Anyway, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor, I have a question. My standing reading this is, this would allow us to have a agreement, please. Just because it was made initially, what would mean we have to give away money? We could still vote not to give away money. It didn't fit all one criteria, so I just wanted to clarify.
Is there further discussion?
May I, may I just respond, please, to, I really appreciate your work that you did on the committee. Don't get me wrong, but I believe in going through my notes, I expressed my opposition way at the beginning. And I'm just continuing my opposition to it now. Same reasons that I state, and I'm not going to restate what I spoke before. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And before the record, I mean, I may have a call here.
Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor, could we have the attorney weigh in, please, with the work that we did on our committee and why it was worded as such?
Holly Wells sat in on the committee and gave most of the advice on this, so I do not want to speak outside of what she's already provided. I will say that the, is this actually, anyway, sorry.
Is there further discussion? None. Madam Clerk, please take a moment.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
No.
Councilmember Johnson.
I believe that the, the, in the, for the grant giving business.
Point of order, point of order. It's just yes or no, there's no comments. Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember V. Locke.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruby. Madam Mayor, ordinance serial number twenty-two twenty-six passes with councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, V. Locke, and Ruby in support. Councilmembers Graham and Johnson opposed.
All right, now, in persons to be heard, this is time for members of the public to share their views with the council. A fairness to those who are here to speak tonight, I want to remind them that this is not a question of years' worth. Standing for reasons will not be entertained, hearing persons to be heard. We start with Eileen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Good evening again, and my name is Eileen Falkenstein, representing Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated. Telling you a little bit about what's going on in our community at Wasi. Mid Valley has reopened after some restructuring and creating their adult daycare program. They are now offering adult daycare, eight independent living apartments, a greenhouse with raised gardens, and a congregant meal situation, just like we do at the Wasi campus here in Wasilla. The Wasi campus has many classes available, we have art therapy, valley fine arts, ham radio class, breathing class. All these things are available to members of the community. We have a birthday celebration once a month, where members of the community are invited to have cake and ice cream, and help our birthday celebrants enjoy their special day. We will be having a senior multifamily garage sale on August twentieth. If you're in need of any items from a garage sale, it will be inside Wasi from ten to four on August twentieth. And we just continue to move on and provide our seniors with lots of things to do, and I thank you for your time.
We'll take a short at ease. Do we need, there's open chairs here if you guys would like to come and have a seat?
Want to make sure everyone's comfortable. Need more seats? We have more seats. We just want to make sure everyone's comfortable as all.
Mary Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor Ledford, councilmembers, my name is Mary Kate Thompson. We know that I'm interested in many, many things, so what I'm going to speak about right now is the recycling center. It's known as VCRS. Take your plastic pots and trays to the recycling center, which is located in Sac Pass. September, and their policy is take some, bring some, so if you want to clean up your garden area, just go ahead and bring your pots and trays to VCRS. It's great anytime, but it's fantastic for the start of the school season, because you can get a nice big brown grocery bag, or bring your own bags for five dollars. So, thank you for, thank you for your time.
Next is David Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmember, so this is, on request of Mayor Councilmember, we'd like to see more of his name. So, for my question about Senator David Wilson, he left within the city limits, and just want to give a quick update here. Some things will be in the next month or so. All sightings coming up on Wednesday, first Sunday at three P M, first Sunday at ninety-five, that is a certain risk. Voting. Remember the state primary for your state president was not, was not, was not. Election for him to replace Congress, meaning it's a choice. To, uh, to, for some history, for eight years.
And uh, if there's any arrangements or something. Um, we're really grateful to have the community support that we received for that. Also, we're walking together as speakers. And we want to be able to be some of the things that to uphold in some way. And you know, we're not like I said, stop me anytime. That's the only thing about it. You can go and do that, but I read it. We're celebrating the program. Some of those things, especially. Stuff is exhausted, but it was wonderful. We had so many, we had three hours. We had, it was two. We also, the friends, um, worked with the museum this year and the friends raised a tour. Display that was there, the Alaska, the best, uh, children's illustrators. And, um, we had some great reveals that the. How many libraries did somebody bring up? It was like a million dollar program before. And this guy, sorry, and I took a reading as well. It was just marvelous. They just, the whole Alaska writers that all spent time. Their craft and their new writing, they're almost all of us. So we fully attended, we went to the place. We're ready for a big club to start up. We have the friends that we have for the first time this year. We have the sessions going on. It's amazing. The show, I'm gonna have to change my name.
I'm bothered. So to get this, this going pretty quickly, I just want to go turn around. Event here really quick. Without delving back into many, many years back, because we can start at the beginning of being here all day. There's been a lot of ups and downs, a lot of bumpy roads, both with the city of Wasilla and with Ace Combat. There's been things that have been done wrong on both hands, and we always come to you in a feeling. So long as we have a meeting at the end of the day, or at the beginning of the next season, it's got to be a bold moment. To talk about what we've done, what we've brought, and what we've done with the system. We have called, we can only do it by the way that we're doing it, where we set the standard for the stock of our state. And then there's, you know, I do have people all over the nation, in Canada and other countries. We set the standard, there's no doubt about it. We also do when it comes to safety, when it comes to, uh, when it comes to regulation, when it comes to organization. We set the standard, we follow the law from the first place, to like, man, this is the biggest case to find the title. Now, for those reasons. So just like, you know, we will, we've never been written up, we own the bare wine lines concerns, you all know. We've never been cited, we've never been written up by the ABC board, not been there numerous times. Looking around, they let us know here, we were there, we did consulting, thinking very seldom of the feelings we had together. But when the whole of the town, when we all have lost the feeling of, maybe Chief Twink could help me out with that, but. But I don't think anybody's actually gonna waste a day on this stuff, and chief, we all know, we're saying this, chief is about to just be the, the real settle. Um, I mean, we're doing good. What I asked for the reasons why we were not kicked out, but we're not welcome. It took me a long time to get to reasons, and we just, I'd be more than happy to share with everybody, because it seems like a lot of people are in the dark of reason wise. But one of the reasons is because we had minors at the show. They took pictures of minors in the stage, in the stands. Please, do yourselves some due justice and read the Alaska statutes and understand that we're allowed to have minors there. Because they were all sent by their parents. So really, all they showed was that it's still a family event, even though we made it twenty-one and over. We don't have a dry side, which is probably for better for the community, right? So people can be there as family members. So we anyways, after we finally got eight, we finally got eight reasons of why and everything. The last bit was, and we haven't been able to talk to you about it personally, because there had to be attorney involved. I don't have any reason why. So Billy and Heather are not allowed there either.
Time is up, thank you.
No legitimate reason why.
We are now at agenda. Clerk, the title of item for consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have items for approval. The first is the regular meeting minute from July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. No introductions, one resolution, which is resolution serial number twenty-two thirteen. Authorizing a method of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three salary structure and pay ranges to accommodate restructure of the IT helper position into an IT specialist one, IT specialist two, placed at a grade six and eight reflectively on the non, non-representative representative hourly pay rate scale and renaming the IT network support specialist to an IT specialist three pursuant to a syllabus book code fifty-five oh four oh eight. Action memorandums.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as well?
So moved, Madam Mayor?
There's second.
One second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson and sectioned by Councilmember Simon Leonard to permit the consent agenda as well. Use your objection to the motion. Here, one, the motion is approved.
Not a mayor point order. Him isn't close until we ask him.
That was all, that was all. And I'm sure. Is there anybody else who would like to be heard?
I would. Is that on, on the Alaska Combat Entertainment? Oh, okay. My name is James Caswell, for the record, uh, thank you for having me speak, sorry to not get here, I don't have the time to sign up. Um, I'm here in support of Alaska Combat Entertainment and, um, the events that they, um, they put on over the years. Um, recently myself became in, involved with, with the activity, um, as kind of a, a lost room. Why they helped reawaken as a result of, uh, bettering my life, my lifestyle, and, you know, my thoughts on hardships and like. Just thought it was something that I would never be able to do, um, or, uh, a dream that I'd never fulfill. Um, you know, Alaska Combat Entertainment made that, uh, possible for me, you know, showed up to, um, some of their events and saw a lot of people much like myself, um, participating and, uh, really putting on a show. Uh, you know, I feel like I'm going to find, um, if I was there and s- and saw anything, uh, out of ill will or any, uh, anything that, that was against the law or, um, anything that I could think of that would bar this activity from, um, continue to operate out of the ground, so, you know. You know, I just, I, I'm really grateful for Alaska Combat Entertainment and just like, I guess, uh, the opportunity that's provided for a lot of our local talent to showcase the skills of it. A lot of people I have said that they work so hard to, to hone it up, you know, um, there's been a lot of, uh, extraordinary talent that's come out of Wasilla that's gone on to, to better things that help representing, uh, the state of Alaska, uh, across the nation, across the, um, um, you know, that fought in Alaska Combat Entertainment, um. So I just, you know, a- as a, as a spectator, as a participant of the sport, as a, um, just a true advocate for, um, individuals to, uh, really find something that they, that they love and they appreciate for, in case they pursue that. Uh, as I did myself, you know, just to see something like this would strengthen my dignity. Um, as far as I know, there's not really, there's not another, um, motor that, that offers that type of opportunity to members like me. Um, and that would require a lot of business to be taken outside of the ci- city, the city of Wasilla. Um, you know, I know that there are fights that have occurred, uh, throughout the winter, that's a kind of a treacherous, uh, trouble, if you will. Uh, a lot of accidents, I love it, um, and to have something like that locally, you know, easily accessible for all members of the community, um, it, it's really, it's a great thing, and I would love to see it continue to happen, you know, um, you know, I plan to continue to support, uh, Billy in whichever way he decides to go. You know, I know a lot of times, um, for, you know, people like myself and, and like Billy, where one door closes, another one opens. So, you know, if you guys choose to shut this down, I can guarantee it's gonna continue elsewhere, thank you.
Okay, Jesse Sumner.
Hi, my name's, uh, Jesse Sumner, I just came on here to, uh, speak a bit.
We are back on the record at seven twenty-four P M. The attorney, Jessica.
I'm sorry. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So for clarification, when you're asking that we move out of committing the hold and then to executive session, so we may Madam Mayor, I move that we exit committing the hold, so we may move forward to executive session.
Councilman Brown, second.
It is. Is there objection?
There are objection to the motion.
Then we can do recall of office.
How about we do that in the motion? That's okay.
Is there objection to the motion to move out or commit to the hold?
I'm not a chair. I I move that we move into executive session with the council and the city Menard Director and Attorney and Clerk. It's the effort.
Mayor, may I add to that? Maybe please have our Chief of Police in there as well. Is that okay?
Please restate your motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we move into executive session with the City Council, City Clerk, Attorney, the Menard Senate Director and the Chief of Police.
Seconds. Boxing gloves.
Is there objection to the motion?
And if I may, just I'm going to, as normally what we do is we also include the reasons we're going into executive session. We just want to make that clear on the record and so.
Discuss that Menard permitting
Matters Idiot Knowledge of which should clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city. Attorney, confidential attorney-client communications made for the purposes of facilitating the rendition of professional legal services to the city.
Well, that's what I said.
There's no objection to the motion. So we are in our executive session.
We're gonna exit to the back Council Conference Room, those that are invited. Seven twenty-eight P M.
Okay, the time is eight oh four, we're back on the record. I need a motion to come out of executive session.
Oh, ma'am, Cosman Brown, I move to come out of executive session.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Brown and seconded by Councilmember, um...
Has joined.
Uh, is there objection to the motion? None. Madam City Attorney.
So, to return to where I was before the executive session, I was asked to speak about minority county voting systems and how the administration's made over the decisions. It also sits in Title II, which is the administration's title, uh, the mayor of the government administration with the operation and maintenance of the majority voting rights. But now, in the conference, there's an important question that I want to ask the city council. This is a kind of a process for trials that we have to deal with, and it was the way the citizens is the way it is. So, we're hearing an office person who has the issue, and it's the municipal county that is a part of the game that related to minority operations, and that's usually a reflection of the kind of issues that's involved in that, that's limited, and it's a valid event. Um, so that is where the conflict is on it, as we're seeing, as we're speaking, as we're making decisions regarding the major decisions. Um, beyond that, um, I do just want to back up for just a second, I want to say here for a little bit, I'm not, I mean, you might not be having either any council member or anybody in the administration, this is just supposed to provide a basis for these things. Contracting is still within the day. Um, I want to be really clear that although there's no ballot rights, and it's just a women's permit, that's a place in the industry of doing this. Um, it's not, it's not a function of the city, it's just maybe the ballot rights for such a decision don't, really don't exist with the city council, it's not for the city council's review. Um, to your appeals and your messages by the administration. Um, that is about where the legal piece of it ends. Um, as I said, we'll come in soon. The body was wanting to talk, but instead of answering some questions, there's nothing to say, because they may as well go to the other side. So, that largely concludes my remarks, unless council has further questions, we get to the next one.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Communications.
Yeah. We are now at communications. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the items under communications.
Madam Mayor, we have the Airport Advisory Commission minutes, July twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and the Whistle and Landscape Standards Review Committee minutes, July eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.
We are at audience comments. We are now at audience comments. Again, to provide fairness to all attendees, this is a time for members of the public to voice concerns to the council, and dialogue with the council is discouraged. However, the council may ask a clarifying question. If you have a question for city staff, they will take note and meet with you after the meeting.
Madam Mayor, if I may, we also, really preferably, we have a public records request process, and so if there's particular questions, or words that members of the public wish to obtain, contact my office, and we'll continue that process.
Is there anyone present who would like to address the city council at this time? If so, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name.
Do I get to talk again?
Mm-hmm. You get three minutes.
My name is Billy Stevens, and I'm here to try to find the counsel. I just want to thank you guys for the time that you spent back there. I'm sure that there was a lot of fun deliberation, a lot of business, eleven years here in Whistle. That the concerns that were brought in front of us were the deciding factors on us not being able to continue with minority operations. I feel could easily be met with a, with a coming together to be able to, to be able to remedy these concerns. Honestly, guys, to somebody of their family business, to strip, strip the community of the revenue, and not just the small revenue. Like Scott said last week, it was only eight thousand dollars for, uh, for four shows. It was four and a half days that were treating, and it was a total of almost two a year. And it's four and a half days that created the eight thousand dollars. Previously, we've done anything from seventy-five thousand dollars in six months to what does the new law would be, fourteen to sixteen thousand in direct revenue to the minority market and taxes. But again, I feel that for you to go and ask the concessions, which we're forced to use, what would they make when we're there in comparison to anywhere else? And by the way, that's another thing that's different according to our contract, we're the only vendor into minority where the only vendor into minority center is not allowed to use a, a, a caterer, we're not allowed to cater, we're not allowed to use a food truck, we're forced to use the concessions, which is different than anybody else there. Right? I don't know. I mean, there's been a lot of different things we're forced to be previous to the show as opposed to the CD D night, which is another thing that's all for us, for everybody else that's at the facility. We, there are, we set up and break down all of our own chairs, the road vehicles, and we set up and break down all their own chairs. I mean, there's things that are different for us that happen for everybody else, and instead of complaining, what do we do? We meet you, we do it successfully, we do it without incident, and, uh, and we create revenue for everybody. We help the youth, we help the minority center, we help the seniors, numerous different nonprofits. I would love to be at the minority center, I would love to continue this successfully. I would love to come to a agreement with the, with the council, with the, with Mr. Bell, and so we can do this successfully to make everybody happy. I would love to do that. Obviously, we'll take our, you know, to Palmer or somewhere else, and all the revenue we listen to. I really do appreciate you all. Still, again, thank you so much, you guys, and thank you for your service. A little reading on you. You've got quite the resume anyway, so it's, it's pretty awesome. Uh, thanks a lot, guys. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
I'd like to speak again.
You have three minutes. Please begin by stating your first and last name.
So, Kiana Horst again. So, previously, I spoke about how the city and East has grown. So, at the com, I'm a hockey player, and actually, I've trained with Billy and fought for him before at the spot. We're a small town. At the Menard Center, I'm a hockey player. I know of multiple hockey players that have come from a small town, grew up playing here, and made minors and semi-pros. I've also seen Nando fighters coming from a small town vying for Billy. They've made it to bigger shows out of state. In Alaska, we're constantly, like, pushing, growing, and I'd like to continue to see the growth. If we've got small-town people coming up, let's keep it going. I need, there's many more opportunities for we can keep these fights going. That's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Anthony Borges, and, uh, if I heard the city attorney correctly, the decision for this just lands squarely on you, Madam Mayor. This is just an executive decision, and that's that. And, uh, I, I want to ask you to change your mind. I, I have... Is it just something about Billy you don't like? Is it something about combat sports that you don't like? This isn't, to me, it's not about an issue of what type of revenue this is generating for the city. It, it's about just access to the facilities. It just, some politician can arbitrarily decide, "I don't like you, I don't like what you do, and therefore, you're out." And, and that's just patently unfair to say that there's nothing with the council yet. It just doesn't seem realistic. I'm, I'm not an expert in government, but I, I know mayors can veto council decisions, and councils can override mayor all of Edith, and, and this, you know, to jam him up like this is unfair. Like, if he was here all day, you know, a talk, and a story, talking, a lot of people, that sort of thing doesn't seem to come up against the same sort of function as having a legal, family-oriented, respectable event. Change your mind. You know, let this man do what this man does. Provide entertainment to the city that I live in. He's an asset to our community, and change your mind. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jordan Rhodes again here. Um, you know, there's not. This is a small town, small community. We don't have a lot to do in the wintertime, and one thing you have is once a month, Menard Center, we get to go and watch, watch some fights, you know, and I've brought my kids, like I said before, and it's built many family memories and built many friendships. Just, it's like, you know, I can't reiterate it again, you know, anymore, but just do this once a month event that doesn't cause any havoc on the town. You were talking about how they were addicts and whatnot. That's when they're, when they're going to, we get rid of this, and we already have such a drug epidemic down. Also, I got to do. Let me take away one thing I get that's positive. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Now, our two, uh, court attorney and council comments. Please keep your closing remarks limited to three minutes. Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, um, candidate filing period closed for the October fourth, regular city election. We have two candidates running for seat E, and one candidate running unopposed for seat F. Uh, sample ballots should be posted. Candidate names are in your website. Sample ballots should be posted by the end of the month, for anyone that's interested. Councilmembers Brown and Graham, you'll be traveling to the A and S R website of conference tomorrow, so I wish you well with the conference. Um, state primary election will be held on August sixteenth. In terms of city precincts, we have had precinct boundaries going to be, in fact, starting with the primary. We have new precinct numbers and then new precinct locations. So, if anybody's interested in that, um, those maps, precinct boundary maps, and the new precinct numbers and locations are on our city website, wausau.com/vote, or I have the information available for you. And then state fair is also coming up. Matt Combs and I are going to jointly share a booth at the state fair. They will be on the perma table if anybody wants to say hi to them. So, that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Madam Attorney.
People also go on the state's Division of Elections website to find out their polling place?
Yes. Madam Attorney.
I don't have much, um, details going back to you, so I think I'll just leave it at that.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard.
Um, I, I don't have any comments tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Graham.
Yep, I confirm that. They will.
Madam Mayor, at ease, please. Attorney, come on.
She talked about stuff.
She talked about stuff.
I didn't say what you just said, so that was my statement.
There were other permits.
That's not what you just said. You said there are a lot of people. Yes, but that was executive session material that you just abolished.
That was all?
No, it was not.
You wish.
I'm sorry, we're at, at ease, were we not, Madam Mayor? We were at at ease?
Yes. Okay, we are back on the rebound. Five. Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And to the citizens, again, I project a point of interest to the council. Thank you very much. And to the great committee, thank you for working within the, within the council. Great, ready, make.
Councilmember Belo.
Um, I just want to thank the council members and the city count, the city attorney who worked on the grants policy. Uh, it was really good, and sorry, I couldn't help. And that's about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'd like to thank you all for putting in the force of your strength. I realize in some cases it takes a lot of effort. I want to thank you for your commitment to the work that you're doing. You're successful. I want to encourage you that your work is your strength. I want to thank you for the work, Councilman Aaron. I'm ready to propose it, even though I can't support it. I really appreciate your efforts, please. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Well, thank you very highly. It's up. Thank you.
It's my turn. I appreciate all of you coming in and voicing your concerns and whatever to give. I asked a lot of the decisions I was making, and I can't, and I... I tell you that I can't talk to Oz, to the attorney, the city brought, you know, to a lawsuit, and the citizens, the city elected, and I have committed to the best of my ability. And when the decision we're making, trust me, I take advice from council, from the citizens. So...
Is there a motion to... If there's an objection, do you want to adjourn the meeting at? We will adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-eight.